Thank you. Everybody is present and accounted for, and so we have a forum. The next item on the agenda is adjustment approval of the agenda. Does anybody have anything to add to the agenda? We all good with it? If so, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
One second.
Tim, all in favor? It is unanimous, thank you. Next item is approval of the minutes. I know we had an issue with the 20, with the May minutes last time to bring back. Lisa, did you find something there that's been changed on here?
I just provided near verbatim minutes, just to make sure it was covered.
Okay, is everybody good with the May meeting minutes now?
I would like to comment, Madam Chair, and I'll be rather quick. I had asked for a vote to be taken, and this is all in the past. It wasn't clearly understood, obviously, by the clerk, and so the minutes weren't reflected properly last time, and now we got the exact wording. And the intent was to have a proposal actually on the agenda for a vote. And so now we've actually, what proliferated from that became a change to our rules. So we can talk about that later when we get into the change of the rules. I think we should just move along, approve these minutes, and forget about these things that happened in the past.
Okay, so would you like to make a motion to approve the May and July planning more minutes?
No.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Anita, is there a second? Michael, all in favor? All opposed. Callahan is opposed, everybody else is in favor, so the minutes are approved as presented. All right. The next item on the agenda is public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the planning board, now's your time. Doesn't have an item on the agenda, and there's no one who's stepping up to speak, so we will go to our old business. We have one item of old business, proposed amendment from citizens on the fence ordinance. And so Matt, I will turn it over to you to take us through that. We saw this first in June, and I had some discussion, and it's coming back to us now this month.
Absolutely, thank you. So this is a proposed text amendment that would deal with fence sizing and location on what's called a through lot. I'll show you a couple of examples of what a through lot is. As the Chair just mentioned, this was discussed at the May, sorry, I shouldn't say 2022, it was a type of their planning board meeting, where you discuss the proposed text amendment that would affect how fences are allowed to be placed. The planning board consensus at that time was to allow the applicant some time to consider the feedback and discussion that the board had had, and consider revising their request. Just a brief run through of the current ordinance. It allows, the current language requires that a fence must not exceed four feet in height within 25 feet of the front property lines. That's essentially your front yard on the lot, so in that front yard area, that front setback area, you have to drop your fence down. If you have a six-foot fence, you have to drop it down to four feet, once you get to that 25-foot mark. On through lots, both lines abutting a street right-of-way are deemed front lot lines, so you have a front setback on both sides of that lot, because there's a street in front, the way our ordinance is currently written. And I'll show you some examples of that in just a bit, so you get an idea of what that really means. The proposed ordinance would create an exception to the fence requirement in cases of a through lot. A through lot would need to be created per the ordinance, per the proposal, by combining two existing lots. Once again, I'll show you an example of what something like that may look like. And then the fencing up to six feet tall would be allowed within 10 feet of the property line on the side of the property that is not addressed. So when you have a through lot, it's only addressed off of one side of the piece of property. A lot of people would probably consider that in their front of the house. So this would allow the six-foot fence to extend on that other side, so not the side that's addressed, but the other side. It could go, instead of 25 feet, it could go to 10 feet instead. So a couple of examples, this is where we see most of our through lots on the western side of the island. You can see, my pointer's showing up over here, Dolphin, Pelican, they're a little faint on here, but these yellow lines are the lot lines, so you can see these lots, front on Dolphin, as well on Pelican. And you can see, some of them have driveways on one side, some of them have them on the other. We don't regulate the driveway placement on these through lots currently, but you can see there's a couple of blocks of those. Now, this is in the wooded section of the town, and I've highlighted two lots here where there's a house on one side, but there's a vacant lot behind it. What this proposal would do would be if the person who purchased this home also purchased the lot behind them and combined them, they could then establish that fence per these standards, where a six-foot fence can go to, up to 10 feet on this side, because the address side in this case would be on 16th, so they could extend that down to 7th. The current ordinance would require that that fence be no closer than 25 feet, and then it would have to drop down within that 25 feet to a four-foot. So the original staff report you have included in your agenda packet as well, as well as the discussion, supplemental materials from the applicant, the staff report included consistency statement for approval or denial, for the planning board to consider. Our recommendation would be the planning board hear from the applicant, and then forward one of those recommendations, whichever it deems appropriate, to Town Council, for them to consider that at a public hearing. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have, if you'd rather hear from the applicant first, since that's in the discretion of the board.
Thank you, Matt. Actually, I'd like to add to what you've said. Before we hear from the applicant, you will recall during the discussion, I offered to go and make a site visit to the property, to talk through what some of the alternative language might be, and I did that, and the applicants were very gracious. We had a good conversation, and I took a good look at the property. I didn't have a measuring tape with me, but we used some landmarks and some widths of the fence sections and so forth and so on. And I determined from that that the fence could, one of the issues was moving the fence would require cutting down trees, and the fence could certainly be placed in a manner so as to not require cutting down any trees, and there are quite a few in the front section there. But also, one of my concerns was the way the language was proposed, and we had some discussion about that at the first meeting, would open that up to all of those through lots on the beach area and so forth. There was a significant number, I think, in the notes I provided with the proposed alternative language. There's 46 blocks, with typically 15 through lots in that area. And also, there are some through lots on West Oak Island Drive, there's only four of them, and there are 12 in the Mobile Home District area. And so I had promised that the applicants and I would work on trying to provide some wording that would focus and address just that residential area and that particular situation. And so that's what you have before you in, on page 42 at the top, would be an exception. "On through lots of record which are the result of combining two interior lots of record in the R6 residential district, a fence not exceeding six feet may be erected within 10 feet of the street right-of-way from the front property line that does not correspond to the address assigned to the house on the through lot." And that's what Matt showed you, the pictures up there. And so I sent that to the applicants when I had, and you've got all the various definitions and so forth, that all of that information was based on. And so I sent that to the applicants as my stab at trying to create some language that would serve just that situation, and not expand it elsewhere in town. And in the process of, and this is an interpretation, I don't know whether staff agrees with that or not, but because a fence is a freestanding accessory structure, not an accessory structure building, the, I know we had some discussion about some percentage reduction in the required setbacks from the vegetation ordinance, and it does not seem to me that that would apply to fences, because they're not buildings. And so the 25 feet is what it is, and I did, like I said, relayed that information to the applicants in an email, and left it up to them as to whether they wanted to, when they came back, bring that forward, and apparently they have decided to request the proposed alternative language. I also inform that even though I had done all that and written this, I still don't support making a change in the ordinance. And so with that, I will ask if they would like to come up and speak to us today.
Good morning, everyone in the planning board. Thanks for your time and hearing us. My name is Sonya Cobble. I'm a resident here of Oak Island. My wife, Lorraine Tamaro, also residents here. We own the property at 157 Northeast 17th Street. And yeah, thank you, Matt, for presenting it very well and getting the background started. We were here at the May meeting and presented our request for a text amendment to a very specific part of the ordinance around the height of fences. And really appreciate, Dara, you coming out and making a site visit. We did extend that opportunity, we have nothing to hide. We are here to essentially live a good life, right? On an island, enjoy outdoor space, enjoy the mild climate that we have here, and we had the opportunity to purchase the lot directly behind us. So from our perspective, it's not a true through lot, because it's not a single lot, like what Mr. Kirkland presented on Dolphin and the other additional lots that Dara was so kind to share with us, the number of lots on the island. So we believe this is a very specific request, where we've now invested a significant amount of our money to extend our outdoor living space. We did add a pool in our backyard, and for us, this is about safety and utilizing the property, the additional property that we purchased, to the extent that we can. We're still trying to be reasonable here. We don't want to put a six-foot fence all the way to the corner of their lot, but we would like some freedom to utilize that space, feel safe in our backyard, that prying eyes aren't looking at us while we are enjoying our pool. And we still feel that it offers the safety to our emergency services, because the front of our house is still open, accessible, viewable. And we see this as now the way it's designed, as the backyard space, since this is now a very specific and distinguishable through lot that we would like to utilize, Dara's suggestion on the language. And if you need me to, I'll read that, but I think it's in your notes. Essentially, we're asking for an exception to, number one, define what a new through lot, or what the through lot definition would be in this specific and distinguishable case, which would be the result of combining two interior lots, so the wooded section of the island, so very specific to the zoning in the specific area of the island, the R6 residential district, and to allow for an additional two-foot of the fence, up to a six-foot fence, instead of just a four-foot fence, to essentially provide us the additional space, the safety for our dog, the safety for, yeah, us feeling safe in our backyard and enjoying our pool space. I appreciate Dara's feedback. Yes, we can move the fence. It is a hardship. It would require us to move more than 25 feet, because there are trees, when you pull a tape measure, right in that 25 feet, within 10 feet of that. So we would be looking at 35 feet. And this fence, if you drive by and look at it, fits very nicely where it is. It's a natural space. You can't even see the fence from the road, because there's evergreen shrubs in our neighbor's lot. And we took the time to go and talk with our neighbors, because we knew, okay, we're putting a six-foot fence, it's on your property line, how do you feel about it? You should have received a letter from Carol Smallwood, who is our neighbor, who is directly adjacent to our property, who is extremely supportive of keeping the six-foot fence. Our neighbor across the street is also, and our neighbor directly adjacent to us, who owns three lots, and the lot adjacent to our property cannot be separated because of the way they positioned the house, so there's a significant buffer. So in our particular case, our neighbors are extremely supportive and willing to write letters, since they couldn't be here with us today, to support the discussion. So I encourage you to take a look at that, and feel free to drive by and look at our fence. I think we're pretty cognizant of how things appear. We want to keep things looking nice. We want to be productive members of this town. And just ask for your support to take into consideration us as a resident, to make this amendment to the very specific definition of combining two interior lots of record to distinguish a through lot from the other three lots on the island, to extend six-foot fences on this, in this particular situation, to within 10 feet of the easement as defined in the setback, which is currently, right now, 25 feet.
Thank you. And we do have copies of the letter that Carol sent.
Perfect. Glad you received it.
Yes.
She wanted to be here with us today, because she's very passionate about this topic. She has experienced significant inconvenience because of houses that are being built directly behind her lot that overlook her outdoor space right now. It's as if they're in the middle of her living room. So she really, she actually got down her knees at our door and thanked us for purchasing the lot and keeping it natural, so.
Yeah, the, there are a lot of situations, and will continue to be more situations on the island, where a house is built on pilings in close proximity to a house that's not. And I guess we decided we don't want walls, but there's certainly a, I can certainly understand the inclination to wanting to put up a 20-foot fence, quite frankly, but we can't do that.
Sure.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for either the applicant or for Matt? Tim, you got any questions?
I don't have any questions, but.
Well, get questions first. Natasha?
Any questions? So then, the normal setback is 25 feet.
Yes, ma'am.
From the street, right, for a house to be built?
For a six-foot fence.
For a through lot.
Well, yeah, but if we're building a house, if we're building a house, it's 25 feet off the road.
Right.
Correct.
And that's why the.
But what we're, are we, I just want to make sure I'm 100% clear on this. So if we were to build a house, we'd have to go 25 feet back from the road for the setback. Are we asking to go 10 feet in front of that, what it would normally be for this fence?
It would be 15 feet further.
Right.
Right.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Anita?
I just want to clarify that it's six-foot fence currently on all three sides of the lot, and.
Up to the. First foot trucks, the front of the house, and then you'd have to lower the fence down to four feet.
And that's how they have it now?
They have it six feet all the way around, it was put in without permission.
And so, and we're asking them to lower that to four feet?
No, we're asking them, if they don't, we're not asking them to lower, we're asking them, they could certainly lower it if that was their decision, but they would then at least need to move the six-foot back, so.
Because of the trees, they have trouble moving it back.
Without letting trees.
And like I said, it's clear that the trees can be cut, and we didn't do the tape measure kind of thing, and some, you know, get a surveyor to get the property lines and all that. It appeared to me from our ground estimations on the visit, that that could be, the fence could be put through there at six feet with, at pretty much the 25 feet without cutting. Now, we're not going to get into a debate about all of that, but the fence is flexible and can be installed that would meet the current code without cutting a tree.
And the issues are the expense of doing that?
Yeah. The expense and cutting trees and.
Privacy, the safety, and Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but there, this has flip-flopped the six-foot, four-foot. It's gone back and forth. It used to be six-foot, and then it dropped back to four-foot. So my understanding is the ordinance has changed over the years many different times.
I can't speak to the history of this particular ordinance. Ordinances and regulations do change often, and it wouldn't be unusual to have some resulting standard change over the years, so it's possible.
Yeah, as I recall, the argument previously, at some point in history, was it was always a four-foot, and then people wanted to do something larger in the backyard, so to speak. So there was some discussion about that. Michael, any questions?
No questions. I mean, in this situation, I think the fence looks fine, and it's not attrusive, but better we're looking at making this possible for everybody. That's.
That's the whole problem.
The big issue.
I know.
From my perspective, it wouldn't be for everybody. It would be in a very specific situation, where you have to combine two lots directly behind each other to be able to.
Well, that's what I mean.
Yeah. And how many lots are left on the island that you could purchase?
It's getting fewer and fewer.
Yeah, in the, in the R6 residential district. So we're trying to be very specific and distinguishable to address that topic, because in May, that was a big discussion, is if we do this, will it make it accessible for everyone? And so we really took into consideration, let's make it distinguishable and specific to this particular situation, and in this particular district, R6 residential district. So we tried to take that into consideration from the feedback that we received in May.
It does limit a lot.
And also, I just, I don't, if the planning board is aware, there was a text amendment granted for corner lots, for the same situation, where corner lots asked for a text amendment to allow a six-foot fence on the property line, and that text amendment was granted and is now in the ordinance.
As 7.8.4. And actually, on Northeast 16th Street, where our lot is, there's three combined lots, one in a corner lot, and they have a six-foot fence directly on the property line across three lots.
Matt, I think I wrote this before, it is possible, you know, we could recommend it, and if it doesn't, that they could actually raise the ground two feet, cut the fence down, make it four feet, and they still get the same height. This is something, if something, that's a possible, you know, if something doesn't.
There are all kinds of ways to, well, the fence is measured.
Do we have any issues on bill, so any ground raising would have to, if they could meet any of our.
I mean, you could have a little berm, she could have a berm.
Still have to meet our.
Yeah, that wouldn't.
So anyway, that's an option later.
Matt, I noticed Steve just walked in, I'd like to ask him a question, if I could.
Sure, and I can also, the question came up on how many vacant lots there are on the island. Recently, staff took a look at some tax parcel data. We were able to identify over 1,400 pieces of property in the town that don't have any heated square footage on them, according to the tax record, so.
1,400.
That's correct.
Is that in the R6 district?
That's in the town as a whole, so I've just given them some context as far as how many vacant properties remain on the island.
The R6 is certainly by far, in a way, and we were talking about this before, how the 6th district used to be split into three different sections, but now it's all one animal, and that's everything north of Oak Island Drive from 64th Street West, 64th Street East West, and everything south of Oak Island Drive from 40th Street East West along Davis Canal. So it's a huge, huge area. Steve, my question for you was if you could enlighten us as to, corner lots are corner lots, and through lots are through lots, be that as it may. This issue keeps coming up about the situation that was considered, and what is different about combining lots with a corner lot and the fence. Can you help us out with that?
I'm having a difficult time hearing you.
You can hear me.
Tonight is unfortunate.
The corner lots, the corner lot situation, where you've got amendments, where you've got additional lots combined, that keeps being brought up about how you can have a six-foot there out to the property line? Do you recall the details of that?
I still didn't.
I think, I think he's.
Somebody clarify her question.
Do you recall the details of the text amendment for the corner lots?
For the corner lots? Not the through lots?
Not the through lots, yeah.
On the corner lots, you know, for front lot lines, the narrowest lot width is considered the front, and the longer one would be considered the side.
Yeah, but if you've got, if you've got the corner lot, and then that corner lot acquires lots behind it, and they're all combined together.
Oh, well, okay, so now it's a through corner lot, basically.
But it's not all the way down.
Right, so we're talking like overall Pelican, we still look at two front lot lines.
We're talking about on 16th.
Well, I know on hers, but theirs is not a corner lot.
No, no, we're talking about up the street.
No, but there is one on Northeast 16th, on the corner that.
That has front and back.
That has three lots combined, and their fence runs around the property line.
Oh, oh, okay, the one off of East Oak Island Drive, right, yes. I do remember that, and what it was, is that they, they said that for that scenario, that's not a through lot, it's a corner lot. So the front lot line is off of East Oak Island Drive, and then the side yard was considered, well, down that 16th Street was considered a side yard. And the way the ordinance was written, it was said that the accessory structures could be placed within, in the rear and side yards, but not forward of the principal in the front yard. So now it's, so that gave it the allowance, being a side yard setback on 16th, to have that six-foot fence there. But it had to, but it couldn't go into the front yard, which would have been in front of the principal structure off Oak Island Drive. So, but that, so again, the way the language is written, and I have to have it in front of me, I don't know if they have that or not, but it stated in the setback requirements that it could be within eight feet of a boundary line, except in the front yard. So that truly was the rear yard setbacks. Now, if they go back and subdivide it out, then they create a non-conforming fence, because it would be six feet. That language.
I still don't know that everybody understands what's going on with that, but to me, I just wanted to see if you could provide some clarity. I don't have any more clarity on it than I had before, but it's a corner lot, and we're not talking about corner lot, we're talking about interior lots and through lots.
Yeah.
So let's distinguish that.
But when they combined it, it became the side lot.
Yeah, it became.
So if you combine it, does 16th Street become our back lot?
I understand, I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, it doesn't, because you've got a through lot. No, it doesn't because you've got a through lot. This is a corner lot. It says no fence exceeding the height of four feet will be constructed within twenty five feet of the street right away from the front property line excluding alleys. So the front property line on that scenario where you've got East Oak Island Drive and Sixteenth Street is East Oak Island Drive.
Yeah.
And Sixteenth Street from beyond, from the front plane of the house and back, the fence can be six feet tall, but it has to drop down heading toward East Oak Island Drive, the four feet. And, and that, that, there's a couple of other scenarios on the island. There's, there's a house down on the East Oak Island Drive that fronts seven, maybe a sixty.
Seventy something, somewhere down there.
It's a nice white little fence and that the same thing, they were able to put the six foot fence because East Oak Island Drive became the side yard. And the front yard was whatever that Southeast Street was. The same thing. Now, their scenario though, they're not on a corner, they're a through lot. And it says through lots has double front yard.
Right. Okay, thanks Steve. Appreciate you.
And we are ten feet off the property line. So we're not asking to be on the property line. We're just asking to keep it where it is, is ten foot off the property line, which is where it naturally fell when the fence was put in. It was just the natural.
Our request is two feet, right, from four feet to six feet. That's the big request. If we had a four foot fence, we could put it directly on the property line. We have a, we want to have our privacy with the pool. So we're requesting a text amendment to extend that to six foot on a, on the specific situation. And if you say there's fourteen hundred lots on the whole island, how many lots total on the whole island?
Nine thousand.
Those were vacant lots.
No, I understand, but if you take that, that, so it could be fourteen hundred incidences if it's in the R six residential district. If there's a hundred thousand lots, it's one point six percent that could potentially fit into this particular definition.
It's about nine thousand residential lots.
So less than ten percent.
But.
Most people don't buy the one behind them. They buy the one beside them.
Yeah, that's built upon. So if you take the fourteen, you've got about ten, ten four, something like that. In, in any event, if you look way down in the future, there's going to be instances where people start tearing down houses to get what's behind them, quite frankly. That's a phase I hope I don't live to see. But, I mean, I, I, I try to think very long term in what the impacts might be. And you don't know who those neighbors are going to be and what they will like or not like. I know I've, I've certainly seen situations in the interior lots where there were six feet up to the, surrounding the entire property line up to the front of the house. And it's dropped to four feet and there's a significant difference in how that whole situation feels for the people on either side. I just keep thinking about walking out my front door and having a six foot fence sitting there all the way out to the property line or even within ten feet, but.
You could have a four foot fence that you look at. It's two foot.
But it is a lot different.
It's a lot different. Because I've, I've been, I've been to, I've been to houses where that four feet was there. And there's a huge difference in four feet and six feet.
And, and then if we voted for this, we would be allowing the six foot fence to go ten feet beyond.
Go fifteen feet beyond.
Fifteen feet beyond the front setback on the houses adjoining. So then down the road, if someone else were to do that and their neighbors really didn't agree, then they may argue, well, I need a six foot fence to, to match up to yours because then that creates an unsightly situation on my side. That's the only thing I'm concerned about.
Could be, I mean, but you could build a house twenty five feet back.
And then your pool, the, the pool that you guys have, is it on the back lot? Or is it right behind your house on the parcel that your house is built on?
It's on that parcel.
Okay, so we can, we can still get the privacy? You can, we, they still have, okay, all right.
You can, I mean, I can see between here and you, or, you know, I can see fifty feet the same as I can see ten feet in front of me. So people can drive by and still see through a four foot fence whether the pool's ten feet from the fence or forty feet from the fence.
But you'll still be able to have a six foot fence, right?
It just moved.
Behind the pool, so it will be.
It was originally behind the pool before, I think, before you.
Okay.
But then you lose, again, you lose your outdoor space. And our dog doesn't have a backyard unless we put a gate in between how, you know what I mean? So.
Because the pool takes up.
So it's a fifty, the fifty-five by one twenty lot, right?
Well, yeah, and so the, the, everything, the pool all about is on the, the original lot. So if it's a hundred and twenty foot lot and.
You can use ninety-five feet for the fence.
Right.
So we're still, we're still having, we still have quite a bit of backyard.
You still have ninety-five feet of backyard, yeah.
We spent a hundred thousand dollars on a lot to extend our backyard.
Right.
You got, you, you, they're two hundred now, so.
No, I, I, I get it. I mean, I, I think we're talking about hypotheticals here.
We are not, we are not, we, we, if, if we appear to be, we did not mean to be argumentative or debating or anything like that. We're just trying to discuss the relevant points of, of what we're doing. So that we're sure that we've covered everything.
With a lot directly behind it that I also own, so I don't want you to, I, I, I understand, you know.
The investment.
Some of what's going on here.
Yeah.
But then I also understand potential neighbors on either side and what might could happen down the road.
Sure.
That's the only thing.
Sure. I mean, in our particular case, our neighbors are very, very supportive. I don't.
You're very fortunate.
Yeah, I mean, everybody has an opinion for sure.
Yeah, that changes. Michael, any other discussion or comments?
That's, that was my really only concern. Like I said, as far as this fence goes, I, I don't have a problem with any of this.
But we're, but we're not, we're not a board of adjustment for a variance. We're a planning board for all of the.
At least it's not a twenty foot fence.
Which, like I said, I could see.
And our six foot.
Where people might think, yeah, I'd like to have one.
But it, I can see what Natasha's saying. I can see that it's really become, I've, I've seen it before. Arguments, uh, any kind of view looking down the road. And when you come in and you, they don't have to be but ten feet off, you're blocking a lot of the people.
I'm good. I appreciate the added discussion of that helped clarify a few things and.
Natasha. Yeah?
Well, I live on the street. I live on Northeast Sixteenth Street. And I've been in the house that I'm in now for thirty-five years. So I've seen the street develop and since it was not even paved and.
Yeah, it hadn't been paved that long.
Probably had a little hair when it was paved. It's been a little while.
They paid those streets in there to try and get down to the, where they were trying to get a boat rent back there. Yeah, so they paved your street before they paved mine.
Yeah. So, but I could take you, I could take somebody in my golf cart and I pass this, I pass this several times a day. And I could get somebody in my golf cart and ride down Sixteenth Street and not say a word and get either to yacht drive or get to Oak Island Drive and say, tell me where there was a fence. And, and you wouldn't even notice it. So it was, I understand the town wanted to keep control of things that might happen in the future. But in the current situation, when you bought a lot that you buy for the purposes of being able to enjoy that much more free space behind your house. Back when, when I moved in this house, Brunswick Electric used to have that, you had to have be ten feet off of the property line in the back in order for them to access the power lines that were there then. And now you can put your fences right on the property line with the understanding, just like if you put irrigation in the right of way out front.
They'll tear it down if they need to.
If the town has to do anything, they can come in and they can pull up what you've got to access what they need to access. The town over the years has been really, really good. I guess they, they, they still, still are about, if they tear something up, they'll put it back the best they can. Not required, but the town's always been very.
Yeah, Brunswick Electric, I mean, the, the easement is still running through there and there's still, you know, there's a box there. The fence was built to go around the box on the back property line. And certainly if Brunswick Electric needed to get in there and the fence was in the way, they'd tear down those sections of fence and do their work. Whether or not they would pay to put it back, I kind of doubt that.
If they can do it without, you know, they're.
They'll try to work around it.
The town used to be really good about doing, doing that, grass and stuff.
Right.
But in this situation, and I know you guys, I don't know them. I've seen them and spoke to them a couple of times when they're walking their dog up and down the street. But as far as us being close friends or anything, I, I just know that you guys live back there and y'all walk by a couple of times. We've talked. So in this situation, I, I just think that, that the town needs to, in, in, in a world that's gotten to where it's completely autocratically driven by government and people don't really seem to have a voice and stuff anymore. My position on this is, in this particular case, it is absolutely no harm, no foul as far as I'm concerned with the fence being a few feet more towards the road because you really, you don't, the most noticeable thing about the fence is, the thing that caught my eye was the little doggy port. I, I, I had to figure that out one day when I stopped and I looked and I thought.
We love our dog.
So if, if, in this case, I would, I would say that we need to do whatever we can do on a case by case basis without opening it up for, you know, a complete cluster years later. But in this case.
But how do we do that?
Well, and, and I would, I would state, state again, the place where you do that is the board of adjustment with a variance.
Right.
And we're not the board of adjustment.
Matt, could they get a variance?
I mean, there is a process for exactly what you're talking about.
Could apply for one.
I, I know they would get a variance if they could.
We were told we would not.
We were told we would not get a variance if we utilized that particular system.
Really?
Because our hardship isn't big enough.
Yeah.
Oh, well, no, that, well.
I'm sorry, that's the, and we got it from members of the town.
You're probably right.
I just.
Hardship, the, the, the.
I know you had to have a hardship.
The, the requirements were, the standards, meeting the five standards, all five of them for a variance because it's supposed to be difficult.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, that is the avenue for trying to do one single thing.
That way.
That's the purpose of it. But it is a very high standard to meet. And now granted, there have been.
I've seen variances for just not wanting to cut a little tree.
I've seen, I've seen variances go through, not at this town. I've seen them go through with the coastal resources commission that was kind of like, oh, well, gee, it just doesn't seem, you know, it wasn't really, gee, we just don't want to hurt this person.
I have, yeah, I've seen one where the.
I'll, I'll, I'll time in here, I would advise that this board not grant a, give a recommendation to the applicant as far as whether they should seek a variance or not.
You're, you're correct.
A variance is a quasi judicial hearing. The board of adjustment can only consider testimony, evidential testimony given in the hearing to, to say that, that they would grant one or not.
They hear anything.
You can't say what the board of adjustment would do without having the case.
As a, as a property owner, they have a right to apply for a variance.
They certainly do.
There are four, I believe five now, findings of fact that that board has to meet. As Dara mentioned, they are difficult to meet on purpose. And the state sets those, the local government cannot vary those standards for a variance.
I certainly did not mean to, I was just trying to explain the difference between what we do and what the board of adjustment does. I was certainly not trying to predict what that, say what that outcome would be or not. But it is a high standard to meet. Okay.
Well, I think what you were trying to reiterate is our approval from this board would be a blanket approval and not just on.
Not just on this case, yeah. And, and, you know, when Tim was talking about the one case, right.
Because personally, I'm all for preserving green space. And I think that's what you all have done by doing this. And, and I love that. And I hope more people do that. But I'm just concerned about not your situation, but what, what might occur down the road.
Or in other places that we don't know about.
Yeah.
I just ask that you consider it's very distinguished for this particular case. So if it's one percent, between one and ten percent of the likelihood of every single through lot came and complained or a neighbor of every single through lot, it's one to ten percent of every lot on this, on this island. So really, what is the harm and foul of being so specific in this situation? How many cases would you actually run into? I, I mean, if it's nine thousand, nine thousand lots and it's fourteen, I mean, you know what I mean? And every single neighbor came and complained, okay, I could see that. But how likely is that?
But the variance is, is to make an exception. I mean.
To make, the variance is to make an exception for a specific property based on a specific set of facts. And it does not, and it does not, it doesn't set a precedent.
Which is perfect for what this is. Because in this case, you've got a big honking piling home right beside of, what was it, Carol?
Carol's small one.
That's the round house.
Yeah, looks right in our backyard too.
Yacht drive. And then you got her house. And then you've got the fence. And then you've got Malcolm's property next door. And that's a half lot that's.
It's three lots.
Three lots.
But the, but the house is set such that the two lots closest to us cannot be separated because of the way they built the house on it.
So there's, it is inconsequential to somebody else.
You tear down the house and you've got three lots.
Being able to build or not build a house. So, I mean, it, the way it is, is the way it's going to be from now on. So if y'all have to move the fence, then you've got more area that's not going to be maintained. I mean, it's just, to me, the right thing to do is to use the process that the town's got in place to say, guys, y'all are good. And it not set a precedent for somebody else to be able to come in and do something that would be butt ugly. If I can use that term.
But how do we do that? We, we can't do that.
We can't.
We can't do that.
I guess, but.
It's not up to us. But I will say one other thing. And, and I, and I hear what you're saying, Sonia, about the, yeah, there's a large number of lots and it's a large area. And the, but the potential for additional instances like yours for somebody having that down the road, you don't know what their neighbors are going to do or whatever. But the potential for that is small, although it's not zero. And, but my, my concern is, yes, this is limited to R six. It's a very simple matter to change that to R six and R seven.
But somebody has to do what we're doing right now. They have to be passionate enough to do all of this. And it's a lot that you require residents.
Well, actually, it doesn't have to be citizen initiated. Council can initiate it, staff can initiate it, somebody on the planning board can initiate it.
You have to go through this process, I assume.
Yeah, it has to go through the process. But what I'm seeing, saying is there may be an awful lot of other people who would want to do something like that. We have decided in history from what's in place for a long time in those originally platted lots. That is a distinction, but a through lot is at the end of the day, a through lot. And my concern would be that that would encourage, open up a can of worms, if you will, in places where it's been clear to everyone for, I don't know, since when were those platted? In the fifties, forties, that that's how that should be.
Yeah, we can't predict the future for sure. We're focused on today and our situation.
Well, and like I said, I'm focused on the future. So, but I, I, yeah, admittedly, there, in this particular situation around the neighbors and everything else, there doesn't seem to be any objection to it, no harm, no foul, like you said.
So I have a question. When the corner lot text amendment was approved and put in the ordinance for the six foot fence on the property line. how many complaints, how many people came in front of you, how many neighbors and complained about that?
That was done before our time. So I can't speak to that.
Is there records?
Obviously, I had, I had to get Steve to even try to explain to me what had gone on with that and, and he seemed a bit fuzzy on it, so again, that's a corner lot, it's not a
I mean, there's a lot of corner lots and most of them have.
Muddy the waters with that.
That's a chain link fence, too.
And that one's a chain link, too, yeah, it's not very.
And a little history on that, is the house right behind it was.
I know.
Bad, and they put that fence up and then she draped like outdoor carpets or something on it to hide that from being able to be seen. It was, yeah, so anyway.
There again, that's not the situation we're dealing with.
So I didn't, just because I'm still in a learning curve here with them, I'm like the baby of the planning board here. We make recommendations to the council, can we make recommendations to another board?
No.
Okay.
Absolutely not. Nope.
Okay. Right.
I just have one additional question, so the, the um text amendment that was put in for um the, the corner lots, where they, so if the side yard of a lot adjoins the rear property line of a separate lot that is per- perpendicular to the lot, then a six foot fence is allowed along the entire side yard up to the property line except as prohibited by section seven point eight point three. So essentially, it changed the definition um of even a combined lot to being a side lot, even though in the, the definition above, no matter what a lot is that's uh facing a road, it's, it's front, it's road frontage. But now, the way this is defined, it says, okay, the front is on Oak Island Drive, so northeast sixteenth street is now a side yard in, in this particular case. How is our situation, it's now our backyard? It's essentially the same if you just take it and extrapolate it just a bit.
Yeah.
It's the same. But we were told we couldn't because of the definition where it says through lots, um, ha, I'm trying to remember where it is, da, 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 da. That essentially it's, uh, both property lines are front property lines. No fence exceeding a height of four feet will be constructed within twenty five feet of the street right away from the front property line excluding alleys. And then there was a through lot definition, and you can see how hard it is for a resident to make sense of all of this. But I, I mean, the definition changed to a side yard. Is there the opportunity to now change the definition to a rear yard? That we're not even, because you can build the house within twenty five feet, we're asking for a six foot fence, which is the different, uh, two feet between what the, what the section, what the guidances, guidelines are right now, which is a four foot fence. But do you see kind of, it's, it's, I mean, there's been.
With all due respect, Sonia, no, I don't. I'm dealing with a through lot regardless of how it's created. And yes, they're the originals. I'm, I, I, I'm not muddying the waters with what may or may be good, bad, or indifferent, and what decision was made and what the definitions were done for a corner lot. We're here to discuss the three lots.
I understand, and it was a, it's a, it's a through lot once it's combined.
Uh, I understand that.
That's, that's.
That's what the proposed alternative language states. I get that.
Yep.
But it has, the what happens on a corner lot, in my mind, has no bearing on what should happen with this lot. With all due respect.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Anybody have anything else? Is there a motion to approve or a motion to deny with the um the proposed alternative language uh and adopt the associated consistency statement?
And I want to clarify what approving the alternative language means in this situation, that they can, they still have to do some alterations to their fence then.
If you approve this alternative language, they have to do nothing to their fence. If you deny this alteration, then they have to place the fence following the same manner that they would have had to place the fence had they applied for a permit in the first place.
So they didn't.
But they did. Right.
Yes, we did. Yeah, I can address it. So yes, we did apply for a permit, so the fence company that uh installed our fence was supposed to apply for a permit, but they did not. So we immediately applied for it. It was during the holidays and we could get.
During COVID.
Uh, and during COVID, and there was no one here for us to discuss or get a response for the permit. We looked at everything we could in the codes and thought we were in compliance and learned differently.
But that was after the fence had already been installed?
No, it was on the day they were there.
Installed.
Is when we applied for the fence permit, the day they were there, but we couldn't find anybody to help us. There was nobody answering phones, we drove up here and we couldn't find anybody to help us. They then told us if they couldn't install it that day, it would be March, and they would need to reorder materials, so we were kind of behind, between a rock and a hard place with COVID and materials and staffing. I mean, I think you've experienced staffing issues too, so it was just.
We weren't trying to circumvent the system.
It was, it was a situation that we faced that we had to make a decision and here we are today.
Thank you.
But I, we, I would say we would be here regardless because twenty five feet back, we would have run into an issue of trying to place it there, either having to cut trees or uh, yeah, so that's how it all came about.
Or build around trees.
Mm-hmm.
I've seen a lot of that.
Yeah. You build a, nevermind. Is there a motion one way or the other? Oh, I, I, I get that, we've been through toughies before. And ultimately, what we do is a recommendation to council. We need to send them something. One way or the other.
I won't be popular, but I'm going to make a motion that we accept the proposed alternative language.
And I will second that.
Would the, uh, and adopt the associated.
And whatever you say, adopt the associated.
Okay, so there is a motion on the table to uh recommend approval of the proposed alternative language on page seventy.
Forty two.
Forty two, sorry, of our agenda packet. And uh, adopt the associated land use plan consistency statement, and there is a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion? Anita and Tim, all those opposed to that motion?
And I get the reasons.
I, I, I did, like I said, I did too, I, I wrote this and I still, yeah, I know. Uh, so that fails three to two. Refresh my memory, Lisa, if we uh fail to approve, do we need to, what will go to the, the town council? Will it go that there was not a recommendation? Will they?
Uh, I would recommend that the, the, the board adopt one of these consistency statements, one way or another, whether.
They did, in their motion, they adopted the associated plan. Well, oh, you want them to do another motion?
Yeah, to, to adopt the.
To do another motion.
If the intention is to denial, the board should adopt the consistency statement associated with denial as opposed to approval.
All right.
Correct.
So is there a motion to recommend denying approval of the proposed alternative of language and adopting that associated land use plan consistency statement?
Or deny?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
There a second? So there's a motion and a second that go the other way. All those in favor? All that's opposed? And it's the same three to two, flip the other way.
So what does that mean?
What that means is that this will now go to be scheduled for a public hearing to town council in their September regular meeting and uh with the recommendation from planning board to deny the proposal. But council uh does not have to follow that recommendation, and so now you have your case to make with town council.
Okay.
Which would have been the same either way, you still have to go.
Sure, but I would have really appreciated your support, but no, we understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next, that's the old business, um, and before we switch over to new business, uh, we have two uh of our members who have finished their three year terms and are rolling off and we're getting some new people in, and I just want to say to Anita, you and Michael both, uh, how much I appreciate your contributions to this board. Certainly in the time that I've been here, two of your three years. And I genuinely appreciate your engagement and the, the help that you've been in serving the community in this capacity, and I'll miss you.
We're going to miss you too, but no.
You, you, I've been, this is a good board, right?
It is, and I appreciate your leadership and everyone on the board. I think we have great discussion and um, everybody's in the right place.
All right, having said that, um, Lisa, do you um install our new members now?
I've already administered the O S thinking my yesterday, so they're ready to seat, and then we just move to the um selection of a chairman and vice chairman.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. You can take those with you if you want, they, they have agendas of their own. It's up to you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Ladies, you are welcome to join us. You have to be the redheaded stepchild and sit next to the clerk. I said, one of you has to be the redheaded stepchild and sit next to the clerk.
I, I think we should also mention this time, Lisa, um, we, you got a letter from Lee Buckson over the weekend?
Yes. Um, yes, so board member Lee Buckstein, he um sent an email over the weekend saying that he was going to resign from the board. He just said that he didn't feel like he was the best fit for it and that um we should move forward with selecting a new member, so we'll advertise for that for appointment to be made at the September meeting.
Okay, uh, so, welcome Carrie and Terry.
Thank you.
Uh, if you, uh, I want to give you an opportunity to, to, uh, I think you've introduced yourself and met everybody and know everybody. But I certainly give you an opportunity to, to, to say something before we get started on our new business, if you'd like.
Can you start?
Go ahead.
Yes, it's, it's really my privilege and honor to, to, to be appointed to the board. Um, I think we're at a very critical time in the future of Oak Island. I am, I'm excited about the U D O audit and participating in that uh, what will be a um challenging process, I'm sure. And um, I'm also encouraged by the um, the training, I believe, that has been requested to be put forth for the planning board, so um, I'm sure that'll be an opportunity for Terry and I maybe others to learn a lot about the process and, and the U D O itself.
Thank you, Carrie, Terry.
I would just echo some of the things Carrie said, and as I, I put on my application, Oak Island's facing an un, uh, time of unprecedented growth into the future, and it's inevitable, there's not really a lot we can do about it, but we can try to manage and um do it in a responsible uh way for the people who live here and have chosen to live here and try to keep that family beach feeling, so I look forward to working with you all.
Great.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you too. Okay, uh, next is um selection of a chairman and vice chairman. We do this every year. Uh, is there a motion or nomination for the chair's position?
Madam Chair.
Bob?
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate you to stay in the role as chairman. Um, and I have a couple of sentences to add to that. I think the, the job is, zoning in it, in its, in itself is technical and very detailed. You have the enormous amount of years of residency in the town, the commitment to Oak Island, and you've got an enormous amount of depth in the knowledge of our zoning ordinance as well as North Carolina statutes. I think that the job is, is kind of a, a tough job and a kind of a boring job, and you have, well, you, you've got to be on the entire meeting and you have to coordinate the meeting and make sure all of the rules are, 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 are adhered to. And, and you've done a great job of making sure that everyone gets a chance to speak, and that's the critical piece. And um, whether you're a member of the board or you're the chair, you, you have the same vote. And um, I just assume sit on the sideline here and, and weigh in on the, on the key things that I think I can contribute on. And I would like to have you run and coordinate the meetings, so I nominate Dara Roy.
Thank you, Bob, and um I accept, I appreciate the what you said about the yeah, it, it's boring to most people, but I, I actually, it was the thing that I enjoyed the most when I was on council and this, and I, I enjoy doing this. I truly do. Are there any other nominations? If not, then I guess the uh.
Making a motion to close the nominations?
Okay.
I can't run the meeting.
I don't know if we need a motion second, do we have a particular way of, we're, how, we're not as particular as.
You know, I don't think you need a motion to close nominations. If there just were no other nominations, you could just vote on the one nomination.
So let's just vote on the one nomination. All in favor?
Madam Chair, is there a vice chair that we need to nominate?
Yes, we'll get that too.
We'll do that separately.
We'll get the chair first, then the chair. And so is there a uh motion on the floor, is the, or the nomination on the floor that we'll vote on is to uh for me to be chair for another year? It's all in favor?
Yeah.
For myself. Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. I appreciate um your vote of confidence in my abilities to provide the what is required from a chair uh for another year. I really do. That means a lot to me. And so now, are there, we do need a vice chair according to our rules, rules of procedure. Uh, and of course, basically, as Natasha can tell you, the only thing the vice chair does is chair in the meeting if the chair isn't there, and I'm pretty regular about attending, but uh, in any event, are there, is there any nominations for vice chair?
Is there anyone who would like to serve? As vice chair?
I, I'd like to nominate Bob Callahan as vice chair.
That was tried before.
Yeah, he's, he, we've tried this three year, this is the third year in a row to try and get Bob to do.
Thank you, I really appreciate it, but thank you. I, I do like to contribute, I do like to be a member of this board, but I, I think that I would like to see Terry um take, take the role. Uh, she has a planning background and, and, and understands the, the law a lot more than, than we do. Then I do, I should say, speak for myself.
So is that a, a nomination?
I would nominate, I would nominate Terry if she'll take the role.
That's Terry.
Yeah, I would too.
The last one.
Would you like?
To put you guys on opposite sides of the table.
Maybe not.
She's been planning work.
Is there any, any, anybody else? I mean, are we, is everybody good with that nomination to vote on?
Sorry, we were. It just, you were, you were a planner, where?
No, I was not a planner. I worked for a university state government system for, for more than thirty years, but I was involved in neighborhood planning and um campus community development, town gown relationships, so spent a lot of time with U D Os and future land use maps and master plans and.
Yeah, we, I've never met y'all before, so I would just ask.
Yeah.
Where were you at? Where was that at?
UNC G.
Greensboro.
Greensboro.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Got a lot of Greensboro folks down here.
And she knows the North Carolina statutes as well, which is, you know, I certainly don't.
It's going to be a steep learning curve.
And she's from down here.
Yeah, one of those.
Okay, so, so.
One of y'all.
Everybody in favor of uh making Terry our vice chair for this next year? All in favor?
Do I have to vote?
You don't have to.
You're welcome to vote.
But you're welcome to vote.
It'll look like somebody didn't vote.
It'll look like you actually want to.
Look like you didn't get supported.
And it is unanimous, so congratulations, Terry.
Thanks for y'all's confidence.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, next item on the agenda is a consideration of a recommended change to the rules of procedure. Put this on here after some discussion with Bob. Matt, I don't know if you have anything you want to say about this or just let Bob kind of talk through where we were on this, or if Lisa does.
Yeah, I think I would have Lisa on this more than me, frankly.
Okay. Lisa, you got anything you want to introduce or talk about?
Yeah, to make it clear that planning board members can actually put something on the agenda without having to make a board member report or anything. They just ask for it to be on the agenda, and it can be on there.
Yeah.
I would say the timing on this allows staff to prepare your agenda packet appropriately and make sure that we give you good feedback on whatever's being requested to be placed on the agenda.
Yeah, Bob?
Well, maybe I'll give a little background for the two folks before they try to vote for this. So I tried to get something on the agenda. I've been a member for two years. And when I tried to get something on the agenda, we had some discussion and it wasn't so obvious that I wanted to get it on the agenda. And then I said, no, I'd like to get it on the agenda. In fact, you know, if it gets on the agenda, we can always table it if there's an issue, more questions or open items. In any case, it didn't get on the agenda. And then I tried to get it on the agenda, and then the minutes didn't show that I tried to get it on the agenda, but eventually I got it on the agenda. And so I kept sending, I kept sending Matt emails about, can I understand the procedures? How do I get something on the agenda? And so it isn't as collegial as the board may appear. You can get obstacles in front of you. So now we end up with this rule change, and my only, I think it's kind of a worthless item because if it's a real rule change, we have to go and have town council approve a rule change for us. And I think they will be confused as to why are we asking how to put something on the agenda and codifying that. Like, after 150 years of being here, why do we now need to know how to put something on the agenda? So I would vote against this and not bother as long as we have an understanding that within 10 days, if you give something to Matt Kirkland, it'll make it on the agenda. So.
So, and again, to bring our new members up to speed, at least how we have, how I have tried to operate while I've been chair, is that if one of us has something we want to see on the agenda, just like Bob alluded to, during your staffing reports, you can say something about that. And then the consensus of the board would then indicate to staff to bring that back to us for an agenda item in the next meeting. So they have an entire month to deal with it. I have, in one case, added something to the agenda strictly for discussion rather than wait until the staff, wait until the board member reports. But typically, that's kind of how we've run. But if something comes up in the in-between, what does a person do? And certainly, individual council members can put things on those agendas without some board consensus. And of course, a lot of times that doesn't go anywhere, but still, like for us to spend our time and staff's time on things that have some support amongst the board members so that we'll give it fair hearing and move it forward. But still, an individual should be able to put something on the agenda without that. And the in-between time, and of course, what Bob's referring to had already been discussed with the board and so forth and so on. But I can see, I can see situations where, you know, we haven't covered all the bases in that, but then what do you do? Do you wait till the meeting? Or do you, how far in advance should it be so that staff has some time to do some background work and prepare an appropriate amendment for, memo for our consideration? Now, as Bob said, I'm perfectly willing to, you know, the actual changing, the going through the process and going through council, if he's not comfortable with that or we don't feel like that's necessary. If we understand that if any one of us wants to put an item on the planning board agenda that's not there, that we haven't discussed before, if we feel that strongly about it and can provide some background information to staff and give them time to prepare a memo on it, then as long as it's basically this 10 days works out, the way it's worded, it works out till we meet on Thursdays, you'd have to do it two Thursdays before, the second, two weeks before. And so it really is, these are the board's rules of procedure. It's up to you guys to decide which way you want to go with it.
Bob, for clarification, so Tim, I guess we have, we're the freshmen now, and you've gone up to the sophomore level on the board.
I was just running that through my brain all the way.
But Bob, so clarify, because I see Section B refers to matters affecting zoning of properties. In what circumstance would we, as a board member, be bringing such a matter to the agenda? Can you give me an example of what maybe you were trying to bring?
You're asking me?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I actually have brought two things to the board as a recommended change. And let's just, I think anything is possible, to be honest. But the two that I actually presented was electronic signs that I want, I made a recommendation to this board that we approve or we restrict electronic signs, you know, those fancy signs that distract you and so forth. And the drive-through restaurants and to restrict those from the island, which we could talk about, talk about that in more detail another time. But so you may, you may see a need with any part of the UDO that you'd like to present. In fact, you know, if you've read the, I don't know, I assume you got the agenda. Dara, our chair, has asked that we have a discussion on a proposed zoning map change. She's going from one type of district to another type of district. So she's proposing a map change. I think you two could come up with, or anyone here can come up with anything, as a citizen could, as a tax amendment, and as a counselor, a counselor could.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
Yeah, the worry on the zoning in particular, because there is a timeline for that, which I meant to get the zoning thing on here. I did look at that, Matt. But then the two weeks would apply to anything else that is under our purview for making recommendations, which is the UDO and anything that the UDO references elsewhere in the code.
Can I ask a question? It sounds like that the language we're considering today has just kind of been understood, and we're formalizing it more or less. Is that correct?
I think the language we're considering today really hasn't been, our understanding is that, yes, we can put things on the agenda, but our process has been to do it at a meeting for the next meeting. This would put into place doing something between meetings.
Opens up that window a little bit.
Opens up that window a little bit, but still gives staff enough time to, you know, I shouldn't walk in here Monday or even right before packets go out on the Thursday or Friday before the meeting, go in here on Wednesday and say, you know what, Matt, I want to put this on the agenda, and here's the stuff, and so tack it on there. And he has no time to run that through his process before it's published to the public. And so that's, that's what the intent of this is. We hadn't really thought it through and had a working policy, if you will, on what that timeline ought to be. So we've established that in conversations, whether there's a need to formally codify it or we just keep that as our understood policy from here on out without having to bother council with going through all that process. Again, that's up to the board. I think we're all adult enough to be able to do this without going through some more formal procedure, because we did just, oh, it was at least about a year ago, completely revamped, our rules of procedure hadn't been changed for 20 years probably. And so we went through and cleaned all that up, and that entire piece did go to council as it should have, because there were some changes with the, we did that with the 160D and all of that. So there were a lot of things in there that made sense to do that at that time. This just happened to be something that didn't come up because we'd kind of gotten into that meeting-to-meeting process. But it gives another window, an opportunity for individual board members to put something on the agenda if they feel like it needs to be there.
I think it's a good idea to putting it, put it in writing and be clear. We're not, we're not always the folks who are going to be here. I think the time, the time requirement is respectful of town staff and all the things they have to, the research that goes into these items. You know, I think we're a collegial group, and so I'm not likely to put something on the agenda without having a conversation with you all about it beforehand. So given those...
But that may not always be the case, like you said.
But given those thoughts, I would support this change. Yes.
And is 10 days the right window? Is that, is that okay with staff?
If it's 10 days, then that's two weeks. Matt seems to think that's good.
Yeah.
That gives me time to draft a response and to submit it for review for the people that look at my stuff.
Okay.
Public's got the same guideline, right?
Yeah. Natasha?
I feel like, I mean, I understand. I see what we're saying, to have a specific guideline in writing. Then we're all on the same page.
And so are future members as we rotate off. Yeah. Bob, how do you feel about now, babe?
You know, I needed to have a rule so I could follow it. Collegial stopped working. So I want, I want, I'm happy, I'm happy to vote for it, but I'm also happy to just follow it without, without formalizing it. But I think what Terry just brought up is for future, future situations, we have a rule and it's codified. So.
Yeah. Tim, you good? Okay. Well, then will somebody make a motion to approve the amendment to our rules of procedure as presented and forward that to council for, to recommend approval of that and then forward it to council for final approval?
I'll move.
Carrie?
I'll second.
Carrie, second? Okay. So everybody in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you, ladies. And gentlemen. We're outnumbering the guys. Okay. Yeah. Next on the agenda is a consideration of, or discussion of proposed zoning map amendment. Matt?
Okay. I'll save my PowerPoint. It's not up on the screen. There we go. So this is a proposed zoning map amendment for several parcels. You had to see, have the parcel ID on the screen there. They're also including your agenda packet. Madam Chair, Ms. Royal requested the planning board review the zoning for these parcels.
That would be Dara.
Dara, sorry. It's been a long week, sorry. The subject property is currently owned by the town, and they're currently zoned R6, which is a medium-density residential zoning district. The property's total about 2.6 acres, located between Southeast 29th and Southeast 31st, right behind the rec center. Everybody knows where that is. The proposed map amendment would change the zoning for the property from R6 residential to OS, open space. Here you see the subject properties highlighted in red. This is the rec center. This is our water tower is the cross trail here. So it's these properties highlighted in red. The current zoning is R6, which is established to provide for preservation and development of residential neighborhoods and higher-density residential development. The principal land uses in that district include single-family residences and their customary accessory uses, garages, storage sheds, that kind of thing. There's the zoning map. You can see the surrounding zoning is R6. Across the canal is some adjacent open space zoning. Then on the other side, you get into the R7, the beachfront section of the island. The open space district is established to preserve and protect the areas of the environmental concern. It is identified by North Carolina General Statute, Administrative Code, and other environmentally sensitive areas as may be identified by the town council. The open space district allows for low-impact uses specified in the Table of Uses and Activities. The Comprehensive Land Use Plan, when you have a rezoning or a zoning map amendment, considers the future land use map as the foundational guide for decisions. The subject property is classified as being suitable for high-density residential on the future land use map. The sector is intended to accommodate one to three-unit dwellings, minimum lot size considerations. At the time, we had a slightly different R6 district. We had kind of a three-pronged approach. But at the time, it considered that district appropriate for R6 MF, R6 A, and R6 B. At the time, that land use sector includes approximately 697 acres of vacant land. The typo there, that slide ran a little long. Well, that's why, because it's on this slide too. The Comprehensive Land Use Plan also considers future parks and recreation areas and essential municipal facilities as being suitable to residential categories, which would be this high-density residential as well. Here we have that future land use map. You can see the surrounding area all being considered as an appropriate sector for residential. The open space, matching the open space zoning. And then when you get across the, into the R7, that's medium-density sector zoning. When you have a zoning map amendment in front of you, the UDO has certain considerations for reasonableness. You have to find that it's consistent and reasonable and in the public interest. Some things that you can consider for reasonableness are size, physical condition, benefits and detriment to landowners and neighbors, the relationship between the current actual and permissible development on the tract and the adjoining areas, as well as whether the action is taken in the public interest and any change conditions warranting the amendment. The town in this information, including your agenda packet, has begun a project to expand the recreation center, which is adjacent to these proper parcels. That project has not determined whether there will be any impact on those parcels or what that impact could be at this time. But the proposed amendment would reduce the number of permitted uses, some that could be associated with recreation, like nature walks, publicly-owned outdoor recreational facilities. Those would become special uses instead of permitted. Also, things like community gardens, et cetera. So for those reasons, staff recommends that the planning board not initiate the proposed zoning map amendment at this time. That's not to say that staff is opposed to preserving environmentally sensitive areas. But in this instance, since we do, we're getting ready to kick off a project. It's very bare bones right now. It's just a box on a piece of land for where we want to build an expansion to the rec center. But once you dig into the details about what that could mean for some of the adjacent property, the land that the town owns, you know, if we need to use that for that project, and it's been zoned open space and restricted that use, then that's created another hurdle that the town has to go through to embark on that type of project. So at this time, what we'd recommend is to certainly discuss, consider whether this is appropriate. But our recommendation would be not to initiate it and to, once that project has firmed up and we know what impacts or, you know, whether we need to use these parcels for any part of that rec center expansion, then we can revisit this, knowing what those impacts would be and knowing what appropriate areas would be to change that zoning or to form some other type of conservation. Zoning is not the only way you can conserve property. You can establish a conservation easement across it or something like that. But until we really get more details on this rec center expansion, I think we should, my recommendation would be to hold off on this at this time.
Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
I'd like to, before I get input from the board, just give you a little bit of history about why I put this on there and what my thinking is. And why just these parcels, there are, Matt, if you could go back to...
Sure.
The overhead, the aerial piece?
Yeah, no problem. There you go. There you go.
Okay. I don't have a pointer. Let me, let me just-
What's up?
When these, when these parcels were, these parcels were considered for, do we have some kind of little pointer thing here?
Yeah. Just, there you go.
Okay. So what you see in the red here was actually brought before planning board by staff in 2016. Whoops. Very good. Get me back.
No problem.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you. Recommending the, the open space, that was not done at that time because the expansion of the rec center was this way overblown project extending back. They were talking about putting pilings in the wetlands back there and decking over and all these kinds of things.
We can't, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry. But there's also property, town owns, okay, right here where the arrow is, that's a pump station. The town owns everything from the pump station to the canal. And then there's one lot in there somewhere going to the next side street. The recreation center property originally were these lots from where I'm going here now up to Oak Island Drive. That was donated to town in 1978 to build the rec center. These other properties were acquired, actually mostly donated. Homer Wright, some of you will recognize that name. In conjunction with putting the walkover at, that goes across the canal over to the beach in the late 90s. Much of that area in the, the rec center was designated as a- Designated as an environmental education center. I think the sign is actually still out there as you're driving into the rec center from this side, from the east side. And so there was a little environmental walk around the water tower. If you've been out there, there's a walk through that larger property below the water tower with a little environmental trail in there. Like I said, much of that property was associated with the environmental education center. Now, I understand about the need to have property and use of the property and figuring out what's going to happen with the, the expansion. The town council is considering now, there are three full lots between the rec building and that red line in that block. Those three lots are 62 feet wide. It's 184 feet from there to that first lot in red there. I think the building drawings I've seen so far that Matt was referring to come down about 100 feet. So you still have 60 feet. That may not end up what it's being. But again, I certainly understand the, the desire on the part of the staff to not fully process this open space rezoning on the property that we do want to preserve there and not develop in conjunction with that as that process unfolds in this, this fall. Hopefully, that's in the budget for this year to begin that. But what was ignored with this was also the remaining property that the town owns in that next block, as I pointed out. I think the parcels are 20, 21, 22, the ones that I'm looking at. There's an 11 that's over next to that house on the next street over to your east. But I think some of those lands also are some environmentally sensitive lands. And then getting back to the original purpose of all of that with the environmental education center, I think there's some history there that should be respected now. And again, with the vastly reduced plans for expanding the rec center, which would basically put that same building size there again, something in the lines of a gemnasaurium is the last thing that I have seen. But, you know, it's never been, hasn't been rezoned. Because people, well, the town owns it, they're not going to destroy it or sell it or develop it. Well, I, I think we do well to designate what we do expect our long-term intentions to be for that. And while I agree that the future land use plan map certainly didn't take a lot of those things into consideration, in our most current iteration of that, it is certainly, certainly possible to rezone property that doesn't match the particular designation that is on the land use plan map. I don't think high density residential will fit that. But the specific, in our land use plan on page 5524, the implementation action item standards, I-19, says the town will maintain the zoning of open space areas such as marshes and other environmentally insensitive lands. And those are also, as Matt pointed out, those lands that might be designated that way by council because they would have to make that final decision on town-owned property and expand where possible. This seems like a case of some expansion where possible in terms of, and I think that was the, knowing, that, that statement was in our previous land use plan along with some others that actually gave it more strength, I think, than what we have in there now. But that was the basis of staff's recommendation for bringing that forward before. But what I would, would ask the board to consider, two things. One is to also expand this to review. And I would say, you know, at least that large parcel, I think it's, I've done marked it, 21 on the other side that goes all the way down to the canal, for including that in an open space designation. And bring this back to us, but also as we're doing, if we're going to look at where the larger implementation action of expanding our open space designations where possible, then there's certainly land at the point that we own that I think is actually designated on our future land use plan map as open space. And there may be some other, I can think of a couple myself, other properties that the town owns, in town that don't have restrictions on them in terms of selling them off, but and some future council would do that and certainly they could rezonate and do it otherwise. But while we're here at this period in time, to make that statement of what the historical and our current intent is for that property in the future, since we're trying to be forward thinking and future minded.
And good stewards of the environment.
And good stewards of, of what we have.
Yes.
So I apologize for saying all that so much upfront before I gave you guys a chance to say anything, but I felt like that historical background was important and that's, you had no way of knowing that. So having said all that, now, Carrie?
I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. You know, I'm seeing more and more of our natural spaces get gobbled up by houses in growth. I think this is an environmentally sensitive area. I'm also sensitive to the town and the rec center. I know the budget is $3 million, so they're not going to build some mega structure with just $3 million. I think they're going to be lucky to get a small building and maybe upgrade the one that we have with that amount of money. That being said, I think it's important to look at this. I know across the waterway, the state of North Carolina owns that and it, as it is open space, I would, I would hope that we would look at, as you suggested, other open spa, or other areas that the town owns and, and consider putting some kind of preservation on those. As such, I'll be supporting your recommendation today.
Here.
I guess my question is, how, how, how did this come about? This was something we brought forth to the, to the board and to the staff, that we felt like these areas should be environmentally sensitive and zoned in that way. Is that because they are literally wetlands? Is that, would that be the environmental definition that we have of this, of these spaces?
There's a good deal of, there's a good deal of wetlands on the property, certainly. There are other natural heritage type classification areas, plants, what, that are in that area as well. There's also some very steep grade drops in terms of, and, and, you know, the whole thing about stormwater and going into the canal and all that.
Sure.
So, so yeah, there, there are, there are all of, and of course, as, as you know, many of those, if somebody wants to build something on someplace bad enough, those can be overcome. But, but yeah, and like I said, the whole history of, while there are no restrictions in the deeds other than the original deed covenants, which are obviously geared towards residential, when that land was, was donated to the town, it was, in that lower area, it was in conjunction with the designation of the rec center as an environmental education center and the walkover to the beach.
And so is it not possible, though, if we proceed with the, with the recommendation here, that there's still the opportunity for a special use request by the town related to the recreation improvement or enhancement? I mean, in other words, it doesn't, the rezon doesn't eliminate the opportunity to request a special use application for the property or no?
Whatever, for whatever, and again, I wouldn't foresee completing this process kind of dovetailing by the time we get through looking at all the open space and doing all that in one fell swoop. By the time we get there, then the, I think the planning for the rec expansion, although it, as, as Terry said, is not going to be enough to impact most of this land so that we wouldn't get bump up against that, so. But then you could still, it's not like a conservation easement or open space designation does have, although, although right now, all of those things like nature walks, what have, I mean, there's a, there's a very minimal handful of things. Of course, we may add or take out some of those things as we go through, recommend doing that, as we go through the table of uses in our UDL. But yes, there are things that could be built in terms of making that environmental area accessible for the, for the public as it already has been or certainly wouldn't be out of code to do that as well.
What I'm trying to clarify, I think, is staff's objection to the reason that, that you guys are, are indicating it's not reasonable and not in the public interest to rezon these properties. Is that because you don't want to go through the special use process when, if it came about as a requirement for some of those tracts related to the rec center project?
It is twofold. First, it's very clearly not in conformance with the future land use plan, which is, as I stated, according to the comprehensive land use plan, the foundational guide for zoning and zoning map amendments. Once again, that's, that category for these parcels is, is considered for high density residential. Open space would certainly limit that from that standpoint, from the reasonability and is it in the public interest? As you just mentioned, you're right, we, we have a project already going on right now. And one of those reasonability statements that you can consider is the, the current uses that are allowed on the property and those future restrictions that would be in place should you change the zoning. A special use versus a permitted use, regardless of who's asking for it, town council is not required to grant us a special use just because staff's asking for it. That, once again, has a quasi judicial hearing where they're going to take evidence in that hearing and have to base that decision on that evidence. So if there are uses that are appropriate for recreation in this area and use on an open space, you have potentially negatively affected the chance of those things being established on that piece of property. So once again, I'm not, I'm not, not advocating for preserving environmentally sensitive areas, but at this time, we don't know the full impact of this proposed project. And until that comes about and is firmed up, it seems to make sense to, to leave those options open, especially for those recreational uses that are permitted currently under the R7 and that would be restricted should it be changed to open space. And I'm more than happy to review town-owned parcels to identify environmentally sensitive areas that, that may constitute good places to preserve as open space. And after the site design is done for this project, we can certainly revisit these parcels and say, okay, these are the ones we're not using or don't need to use and let's consider rezoning those as opposed to initiating an amendment right now that would then have to go to town council for them to decide without the full knowledge of what the impact from the rec center expansion is going to be.
Can I answer your question here?
I, my, I guess my final comment on it would be, I can't imagine, since the council has certainly supported the rec center project, I can't imagine they would stand in the way of special use approval in order to move that forward if these, if these parcels were rezoned. That's just a comment. I'm not in their head, certainly, but if they would support the rec project, I can't imagine they would stand in the way of, of property that could be used to its benefit.
One thing about a quasi judicial hearing, I'll point out, since we do have some new members, the deciding body cannot come in with a predetermined opinion on that. They have to base their decision on the evidence presented in that. So even if town council in principle is for something, they cannot use that predetermined opinion in their deliberations for a special use permit or a quasi judicial hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Natasha?
It was my understanding, or I believe that the town has already looked at developing this property for a larger rec center in a pool years ago?
Years ago. That's not on the table.
No. I know it's not, but as far as what I'm getting at, didn't they determine at the time that there wasn't enough land there-
Yeah.
-to, to meet really what we needed based on the size of the population at the time? And we've grown since then. So for me personally, I'm more for making sure that this green space is preserved. That's more important to me because I think that there's land, other places, that we could probably use for, for the rec center area.
Yeah. There, there, there will most certainly be a, a modest expansion of what we have now.
Right.
But not anything like the whole shebang.
Not the whole shebang that we really need.
No.
So, and, and I think the town should be, we should be the example for what we want to see, not pavement, remediating wetlands and all that, so.
Agreed. Bob?
Thank you. I agree with the comments and with, with all due respect, Matt, especially considering this week that you've had. With, with all, with all due respect, when, when it says the staff's recommendation, is there a committee? Is it, is it just you as our town planner? Is it anyone else that like forms a committee and says, this is the staff's opinion or is it you as a professional planner?
It's me as a professional planner in conjunction with the town administration.
Okay. So it's you and the mayor, I mean, the manager?
Me, the, the town manager reviews my recommendations. That's correct.
Okay. So in a sense, it would be a committee of you and the manager, not, not the rest of, the rest of our town hall?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Because it came up at the meetings in the past where it said- Because it came up at the meetings in the past, where it said, the planning board voted for X, but staff says Y. So I wanted to understand how that staff recommendation was actually determined. Okay, so the next question that I had is, you know, if, if the town wants to use this land for something else, the town could propose a zoning change, and we could zone it again in the future. The question becomes really, I think, Madam Chair, is, is, is open space a better designation than residential? Do we want condos on the water behind the, behind the recreation center? So, you know, I always use this example, I'll use it again. The zoning map and, and our UDO is, is an invitation, it's an invitation to outsiders to come and do something. Are we inviting people to come and do residential zoning on, on that property? I mean, residential building on that property? A question I would have is, what is the timing of the plans for the new rec center? What, when are we starting to build the new rec center? How imminent is this? If it was in two months, I think.
As far as I know, it's in the budget and.
It's in this year's budget.
Yeah, so, and we, as I mentioned earlier, right now, it exists as a, a box on a piece of property, because we have to send that to site designers and engineers to determine not just where a building is going to go, but all the associated impacts that come along with that. There's additional parking, there's stormwater, there's other features that are a part of that expansion beyond just adding a building. So we don't know the full extent of what that would be and what land we need available for all those associated features. And further, should somebody want to put a community garden on one of these pieces of property, which is a pretty innocuous use as a part of that, this board will have voted to change that from a permitted use to, once again, to a, a special use that requires a, a public hearing, that use is no longer, I mean, there's uses in there that are certainly appropriate for recreation. They're low impact, that this board will have determined or require a higher form of scrutiny than currently exists.
Okay. And Madam Chair, the last question's really directed at you. And it might actually, I, I probably could have better explained my answer to Carrie earlier about her question. So on the agenda, it says a discussion of a proposed zoning map. So, and Carrie, this is really kind of a question, maybe help you with your earlier question. Did you put this on the agenda to discuss it, or did you put it on with the potential we may vote on this?
Both.
Both. So then it really is, it's on the agenda to vote, because it can't be on for a discussion if we could vote on it.
Well, in other words, it's, yeah, it's not limited, to me, it's not limited to a discussion, but what I, as I said earlier, I still, because I think there's more property even in this area to be considered for open space. So to me, it's not ready to, for some final recommendation from us to send to council. And I, I, I do think while we're at this, given the larger, the, the implementation action 19 about expanding those open space areas where it's reasonable and in the public interest to do so, that we need to do more than this before we get to council. And my thoughts on it were that by the time we go through some of that and have it ready, that the actual plans for the rec center expansion will be at a point to, to be pretty much locked down. And so if there is, if there are one or more of these parcels that we need to leave as the R6 to keep the door open for potential recreational uses, or if we need to make some amendments in our table of uses under our open space, all of that can all come together. So this, really, in my mind, I guess to better answer your, to truthfully answer your question, discussion is what I intend to not have vote to send forward. But the, but the vote would be, or a consensus, if that's all Matt would need, which I think he's indicating, yes, before he falls asleep.
I'm okay, I'm still here.
Would be a consensus to move in that direction and to continue to have things coming back to us at the next meeting, and the next, and whatever it takes to get, to get that broader work done and, and coordinate that timing with the finalization of the plans for the expansion. But we will have already looked at all of that ahead of time and be ready to do that in conjunction with it, rather than, okay, so we've got this, and now let's go do that.
And to, to that effect, you know, how I would envision that working is I, I would map out all the town property, pull as much environmental data as I could to let you know what environmental impacts are on there. Is it wetlands, is it flood hazard areas, you know, what exists on those properties? And then we can go through an exercise where we say, okay, you know, there's not much use to these pieces of property, they're environmentally impacted, let's consider as one map amendment, you know, recommending these areas be zoned open space. As the, the chair mentioned, we could, hopefully that time frame would work up to where we have some, some firm plans, and we may come back, and the, the site designers may come back and say, you don't need any of that property, go nuts. And we'll go, great, let's, let's rezon it all open space. But, but we could certainly try to dovetail those two things together as closely as possible. I think it'd be a worthwhile exercise to look at town-owned properties that, as we've recommended, and say, what are the environmental impacts? Are there any potential uses for these properties that we may want? If not, let's consider recommending a zoning map amendment to the town council.
Yeah, and, and also gives us something to think about while we're going through the UDO audit in terms of what those uses might or might not be, or whether they should be special or permitted, or permitted with standards by the time, for our open space by the time we get to that point.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair, if I can just conclude my, my points, and this is why I mentioned Carrie's name for us. So this particular item says a discussion of a proposed amendment. The next item below says it's a proposed text amendment on the agenda. So the, the next one is expected to be voted on. So when, when you put something on in the future, and, and you, you kind of asked me, why would somebody do that? So in the past, we've done what the chair is doing right now, where something is brought up, it's argued out, discussed, and so forth, and the professional staff, you know, has a lot to weigh in on. Based on input, professional staff goes back, maybe researches, does something specific, comes back with proposed language, or better language, or, or maybe more in line with what we want. And so that can take months. It, it, it's a minimum of two months, right? But it could take longer. Then when it goes to the council, it could be another month. And so if you've got, that's a amount of three months. Maybe you get lucky and it's going to hit the next meeting and so forth. But, you know, it's, it's best three months, and maybe at worst, four or five months. And depending on how long we take, and if the tree ordinance we spent, you know, a year and a half on. So the, the point I'm making in, in the answer to your last question, why would anybody put something on, like the last item there says proposed amendment? You might put something on to get a vote, and, and actually, the reason I, I recommend it goes on the agenda this way is so that you're communicating to your other board members here that you're expecting a vote. Now, you know, let's say I did it. When I, when you come in, you guys could have enough questions for me that I would say, okay, why don't we table this? Or why don't we vote no on it? Okay, my idea was a dumb one. But in any case, you might also want to move something a little bit more quickly to get it to the town council, have them approve it if they see it a smart move. And then the, the UDO is updated, and the town, I would say, is protected with the right zoning versus some weakness that you actually want to move to fix. So it's really a timing issue to put something on and get it to council versus, you know, let something go through a process, which, that's why I asked Madam Chair, what was she really planning here? And, and to be honest, I guess in the collegial fashion here, you know, if it says discussion of a proposed amendment, I think we shouldn't expect that we would vote on it, but I guess we maybe need to, so.
If I could just add something, I'm sorry, just to clarify on that. For a council agenda, if we put it on for discussion, it will not have a vote. And then if it's going to have a vote, it'll say consideration. So if you look at a council agenda, it's clear in, in the agenda item listing if there's a vote expected. So in case that's helpful, if you want to use the same language or not.
At least, it's sort of helpful. That's what council does, what are we going to do? That would be my question.
Right, and, and when council has discussion, it's typically, just like I'm talking about here, it can, based on the discussion and the direction that folks want to go with it, then staff takes it and does some more work and brings back something to us at a meeting, correct?
And I think if you bring a, a clear, this is for discussion or this is a vote, when you're bringing it to staff, I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah.
And that would just make it clear for everybody.
Yeah, I think you need to, right?
Yeah, and since we're, we're looking at, you know, the amendment and the policy and whatever, and being able to bring things up in between where we haven't had all this discussion, then, yeah, it could very well be, yeah. I called Matt up the two Thursday before the meeting, say, put something on the agenda that discusses whatever, because we don't have all the, even, even given the time to put into what he would want to put into before it comes to us, it still might not be ripe or advisable to expect a vote on it at that meeting. So, yeah, I think that's, you bring out a good point, Bob, the difference between discussion and proposed for our purposes.
For the courtesy of the board to know that this, you know.
What, what's going to be expected.
That's helpful.
Yeah, thank you, Bob.
Tim?
I'm just happy I just realized how to raise this chair up. My knees and my chin for a year now. I'll get it. So, still very much the newbie here, you guys are so far ahead of me on your experience. But the, the rec center, we're talking about expanding the rec center down here on 29th Street, or 30th Street, wherever they're going to expand it.
It's going to expand it to the south, yes, sir.
Right. And this is something that I've thought of for years, as somebody that uses the facilities down here with all the concerts and the tennis and the pickleball and everything. And like Natasha, when, when we were the orchard place down here on the other side of the Captain's Cove Motel, there, there are areas that we're running out of, because I remember back in the 80s when we had the big rolling dunes on the west end, and all of a sudden, somebody got approval to start building down there. I mean, that was, that was amazing down there, if you, if you remember the dunes. So to protect these areas is, is a very, very good idea. And I have thought, just to throw this out there, just, this is discussion. The rec center, that be, I don't remember when we built that, back in the 80s?
Mid 80s, 85, I think, 84, 85.
And it was kind of the rec center, because we didn't, we were using this field for the horse ride. In fact, we had to mow it down to even be able to use it, because it was, it was not even available. So as the town has grown, the rec center has become more of a community center rather than the rec center, because everything pretty much that the rec department does, other than maybe the kayaks, I guess they still do something, I'll be, okay. But everything that the rec center does is, is here. So for the guys, I remember Rebecca and them were, you were about to say something, go ahead. You had that look.
Pretty much, well, well, and, and the reason being, of course, the first half of that, the existing building was built in the 80s, and then mid 90s, they built the other half.
We used to have town hall meeting.
Where, where, and so it, it became more of a meeting space than anything else. And part of the, the discussion when the town hall, new town hall was built, was that now all those, all those boards and town council and everything else has taken up meeting space, now they can have some space for actual recreation, because it won't be, you know, having to try. And so things like the, and then we put the weight room in and that sort of thing. So, so the recreational part in the building itself is more things like yoga or exercise classes, or, you know, weight room, fitness center, you know, the indoor, that kind of thing, yeah.
Right, well, my, what I have seen over the years with everything that the rec center does seems to be more focused in this area. We've got all this land here, down from, you remember Cheryl Coleman's house was right here? And then they've made that a parking lot. And then we've got all this land here, all the way down to Pelican, I guess. And I know there's some wetland issues there. But to move the rec center down here, I don't, is, everything is possible.
You're getting, you're getting, you're getting way ahead of there.
But I'm saying, it's, it's a good idea to preserve this.
Yeah.
If you've got other areas that you can develop.
Well, or if, or if developing.
You just shook your head to the point that my thought went right out of my brain. But my chair.
I didn't know I had that kind of power.
I can think better.
I didn't know I had that kind of power over you, Tim.
But like, like Natasha said, it's, what we need in terms of what a lot of people think about, about a community recreation center, is for the size town that we have and will have in the future, that parcel is too small.
Right.
So, so, but still, there is a, a good use for that with the kinds of things that we have going on there with maybe another, another doubling, basically, I think what they're talking about, it's another doubling of the space that we have there now. And so we've doubled it once, we double again, and then that pretty much is the extent of what those kinds of things and places, even in the strip you're talking about down here, that's nowhere near enough land to do any kind of larger recreation facility, I don't think. Now, you could do something like that on the ball fields back here, I guess, but nobody, we aren't going to lose our ball field, but. So I don't know where that goes, or what that, how that, how that plays out.
But I don't, and I don't, I don't know how you do it, but you, you kind of rob Peter to play Paul sometimes when you're looking at wetlands and developing this, that, and the other. So if you could do that in conjunction with somehow developing this.
Somewhere else, well.
Then tying that in with, is that what I'm saying? And again, I don't, I'm just.
I do, and the thing that, that, just. There's so much of the, the supposed, you used to not be able to get a permit, but for a very small amount in terms of doing the, the wetlands mitigation. You can only do so much and destroy so much wetlands. And once they went to, that's why a lot of our coastal area has been developed the way it has in the last 15 years, anyway. Once the core permits on the 404 and the 401 wetlands went to mitigation banks, you got enough money, you can buy your way out of anything. And the mitigation banks that they're buying to substitute for what they're filling in and developing are located nowhere near here.
Right.
So those kinds of things, I, I just need to stop before I say something in public that I shouldn't say, in language that I shouldn't express it in. Now, I understand what you're saying about some, you know, if, if that became some kind of mitigation bank for something else, and I don't know how that all plays out. My thinking is, you save what you got for what it is and forget trying to trade it off on something else, because every time you do that, you lose something.
Yeah.
Just stop.
And I didn't know how that correlated with, with this, as opposed to what the town already owns here, too.
Right, I don't, I don't think it does.
Okay.
I do know that something a little bit closer, and it's one of these things where it's actually, you know, still here, that whole block that the food line's sitting on, when they built that food line, they had to put in conservation easement the rest of that block for stormwater and some other things. And there may be some things related to the, to the, what is ultimately built in the rec center expansion that would be something where they have to put a conservation easement over some of this for stormwater reasons. I mean, a lot of why I would preserve this is just natural stormwater, just a natural buffer for the canal in that particular spot. So we don't know all those things, but by the time we go through the process of identifying the other town property that is appropriate to finally go ahead and state this is, you know, our intention for the future and make it open space, that all that, we'll know all that, and it will all dovetail together. And that's really what I hope that the consensus of this board is, to give Matt. And that's really what I hope that the consensus of this board is, to give Matt direction to move forward with this.
So are we good, guys?
So let me see if I can capture where we might be, I think.
All right, please.
So, we've had a discussion about this proposed rezoning of these particular tracks, but what we may think is best is more an overall view of all town-owned properties and best uses associated with that instead of this specific zoning request, rezoning request.
I think in addition to the other town properties that would be appropriate for open space rezon. And so, put it all together, there's this, you know, the most immediate in the vicinity, next thing to consider is the land that the town owns on the other side of 30th Street. But then there are parcels we can all identify. I think the one that most, that would stand out in most people's minds is the land at the point. But there are bound to be others. And so that's by our consensus of, yes, let's move forward with this, in this direction, that's what Matt would be looking at for us.
So that's what you refer to as the large-scale zoning map amendment?
It could potentially become a large scale. It would depend on the number and the size of the properties. Once we do, what I would bring before you is an exercise where we'll look at all the town-owned properties, try to identify the environmental impacts that are on those properties. Are there any potential uses? I know we have a large discussion around, you know, paid parking, et cetera, where that, where those parking lots go. So if there's a use of it that maybe would preclude us from rezoning in or whether we need to amend the table or do something like that. But I would envision an exercise where we go through those town properties and make those determinations. And then from there, consider whether or not to move forward with the zoning map amendment.
And what would be a potential timing of such a thing?
I mean, I could start putting the maps together for you to hopefully review next month. You know, and if we look at it and you need more information, you know, we could certainly continue that discussion. But I could certainly map town properties and simple data like wetlands and flood hazard areas. Those are two of the big ones that most people look at.
Right. I think it would be important, coming from the environmental advisory committee, to see those overlays.
Yeah, absolutely.
Would be a big concern of mine, so.
Okay.
Personally, I think we should move forward with what's already proposed and let council know the direction we're moving in and just go ahead and make this happen.
We've got the mayor sitting in the audience, so I don't think we have to worry about council knowing.
I'm not for waiting.
I understand that.
Personally, I'd rather go ahead and deal with these parcels and then.
Understand, but like I said, I think because there are still other parcels in this area that we, that aren't in this particular proposal and that we, by the time we do the additional in that, let that move so that, you know, what's going on with the expansion and what we're looking at with the open space is going along the same track and then we're going to meet down here. So I don't think.
Well, it was your proposal, so.
It was.
I think Matt just said maybe next meeting. He could have something as soon as next meeting.
Even more.
Yeah, and what I'm looking at with this expansion, I'm not trying to drag out the process.
I just say, I don't.
You know how I am about, look, we need to do something right now. We need to send this on. It's just not ready to send. That's why it was discussion. So we could just get everybody's kind of buy into it, feel for it. What else do you want to look at? Is, are we, is that headed in the right direction?
So I think we're saying then the bigger picture look is okay as long as we do that fairly quickly, Matt. Not to tie you down or try to pin you down on a date, but.
Well, he doesn't have a whole lot going on right now.
No, no. It's just very laid back environment in my office.
I stopped by one Friday to ask him if he wanted to go, you know, walk the beach with me because I figured he was just bored out of his mind.
But no, I'll come back with something for you to review next month, for sure. And if you feel like you need additional information to make a reasoned decision, we can certainly revisit that.
Okay. So I think we are done with this and can move on to this final item, which hopefully will go really quick.
Man, I sure am. Just messing with you.
I'm just saying.
All right.
Oh, great.
All right. Back to my spot here. All right. This is a proposed text amendment to section 8.14 of the Unified Development Ordinance. In staff's review of current zoning standards, there's a conflict in this section 8.14 regarding mechanical equipment supporting structures for the equipment and side yard setback requirements. Or side yard setback requirements in most instances is eight feet for principal structure. This section has a carve-out for mechanical equipment, so like an air conditioning unit that allows it to encroach three feet. And then there's another encroachment for support structures for three and a half feet. This creates confusion for a lot of people because you might have, especially if you have an elevated home where you have to raise the mechanical equipment, you may have a platform that encroaches three and a half feet and you think, oh, well, I need to replace my air conditioning equipment. I can put it anywhere on that platform. Well, that may not necessarily be true. And now you're a homeowner stuck with a problem because you've got an air conditioning unit that's too big to not encroach on that side setback even though it would fit on your platform. So to provide some clarity to town staff, because we have trouble administering a conflict like this, citizens from property owners who need to do regular, you know, maintenance and builders who need to know the rules when they build new homes, staff has proposed an amendment to standardize the language and provide allowances to meet the requirements of the North Carolina Building Code, which does have something to say about the placement of a mechanical air conditioning unit, especially in relation to a structure. Once again, 8.14.7, this is the portion that covers air conditioning units. They have to be less than five feet from any lot line. That's that three-foot encroachment when you consider that it's an eight-foot setback. And then there's section 8.14.8, which is right after, that says that other necessary unenclosed projections may extend to more than three and a half feet until a required setback. Certainly, an elevated platform for, to meet flood hazard standards for mechanical equipment would be considered a necessary unenclosed projection for that. So once again, you have a platform that goes farther than the air conditioning unit is allowed. So the proposed amendment would create a consistent allowance of four feet for the mechanical equipment and their support structures. We'd also change the language from other unenclosed necessary projections to unenclosed support structures to clarify what that is. You know, who knows what a unenclosed necessary projection really is, but a support structure is a little bit more firm language. And that'll add, give us some additional clarity to staff. The increased allowance of four feet is essentially, and Steve's here to answer questions if you have any about building code, to meet the building code requirement that a unit be separated from the structure a certain amount. There's a certain clearance that they have to have. I'm going to speak out of turn and say I believe it's a foot. Steve is going to maybe usually. You know, so we wanted to allow for that placement of that unit and allow for a separation from that. So when we look at our adopted land use plans, in the construction of a UDO, it recommends a simpler, more flexible, and easily administered regulatory document, clear procedures, removal of or amendment of outdated standards and elimination of confusing and contradictory requirements. Staff's opinion is that this certainly meets those stated goals.
In spades, yeah.
So staff's recommending approval. The motion is included on your screen and in your agenda packet. I know we have a UDO audit going on right now, and normally this is something that I would say, hey, let's do this in the UDO audit, but we have run into many problems with this ordinance particularly, and we need some guidance sooner rather than later on this to clarify it. So that's why it's before you right now.
Yeah, and I would dare to speculate that because the houses that are being built now are going, maxing out, they're building envelope on the sides, and so this becomes more of an issue.
Absolutely.
It wasn't so much when you slid the house one way or another and you weren't trying to get that maximum width, but it certainly is now. And I know even, even on my property, I started to go out and, I forgot this morning to go out and take a minute, but I've wondered about that in the three and three and a half feet for some time, so.
Sure, absolutely. I have no doubt that there's people, because it does happen, that, you know, they would go to replace their unit and it'd be nonconforming for one reason or another and have to find an alternate location. So this will certainly assist that.
Which is not the intent of what we're trying to do.
Absolutely.
Anybody have any questions for Matt or for Steve? Anybody have any comments?
Bob?
Well, I can't let this go by, I guess, without commenting and picking up on your comment, Madam Chair, which said, you know, when you're maximizing the size of the building to the property, you know, you are encroaching. So if you are maximizing that by making this change, we're allowing larger AC, you know, HVAC units or larger houses, one or the other or both.
I don't think so. The ability to maximize that building envelope width has always been there. More people are doing that, but still, we're not going to change the.
Are they doing it without, like, full approval or?
I mean, that's permitted.
Are we building, I guess, maybe I reverse the question. Are we building smaller houses because we don't have this approved?
No. What's happening is property owners are having to get creative with the location of these units versus being able to place them in the traditional side yard. Or what's happening is people are not being able to even replace their unit because it doesn't meet the standards that are in our ordinance.
Because I can tell you, like I said, I wanted to draw a measurement tape to it this morning, but it would not surprise me if I had to, the way the code reads now, if I had to, because one side of my house is on the, at the eight-foot setback line, the other side is not. I'm not maxed out building envelope, but everything was shifted to that side. Quite frankly, to save a tree. But anyway, if I had to replace my gas pack unit today with what I would have to replace it with, it could very well not meet that, and I would have to try to figure out some way to, and that, to me, is ridiculous. I'm really more concerned about what has probably brought it to the fore in some respects, like I said, is the maxing out the width of the envelope. But the other thing that's bringing it up is people replacing their existing units and then they have to restructure a house that's been there for 30 years to meet a half a foot in the code, and that's not reasonable.
And a half a foot where there may be a platform, you know, that, like, if I just didn't know anything about zoning and I have a platform for an air conditioning unit, I would think I could probably put a unit that would either maximize or put it wherever is on that platform. And then when you come to get a permit, I say, well, it's six inches over the encroachment even though your platform's there. That seems a bit unreasonable in the code. And it's hard to administer because then you have to go get a survey of where the platform is and where the air conditioning unit is for us to even make that determination.
And actually, where most of those issues traditionally have come up is in the beach areas, particularly on the oceanfront on the side, even though the setbacks are the same as they are everywhere else. But that seems to have been a particular concern because of the having to elevate and update and all that. And so there's been a lot of workaround on, in that area for that. But the bigger issue in the wooded area is replacing on existing older, smaller homes.
So is really what we're trying to accomplish here, Matt? Just to accommodate the size of the mechanical equipment that people are required?
And also the, you know, the requirement about putting.
It's to accommodate size as well as the code requirement for spacing between the building and the structures. That's the reason for the increased allowance versus what's there right now. A lot of units are, you know, three feet wide. If you're trying to go beside your house and you have, Steve tells you, you have to have a one-foot separation, well, that would be problematic there, even if you've already potentially built your house and now you're just looking for a place to put your air conditioning unit.
Carrie, you got anything?
I was just going to say to Bob's point, I'm not so concerned about it encouraging larger houses because if it, you know, a larger house is going to have a two-zone system or a three-zone system, you know, so instead of one unit out there, they're going to have two or three to handle the, you know, the space in the house. I think this helps clarify where it can go. I've heard comments just in the last couple of weeks from builders that said, I don't really know how big we can make our platform and where we can, where we can put it. So I'm hopeful this would help.
This certainly would provide clarity for staff, absolutely.
Yeah. And, I mean, I think it probably applies more to existing structures than anything because years ago, the units used to be, say, a 10-sear unit. Now they're more efficient, they're 18 and probably above. So the units are larger than they used to be, just from our experience.
Because they're more efficient, not because they're doing a bigger house.
Right. They just require more space, I guess.
Tim?
Good.
And Bob, Bob, I appreciate what your, what your point is about, because we have been and will continue to be, I hope, sensitive to encouraging overbuilding. And, but I don't, I appreciate you bringing up that point. I just don't think that that's what this does.
And you can certainly disagree.
Fine.
Good, okay. All right. Is there a motion then to recommend that county council approve the proposed text amendment and the associated land use plan consistency statute?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Tasha, is there a second? Carrie? Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And we do still have to do, are there any board member reports? We may be talked out by now.
Steve.
You got anything? Bob?
Nothing, thank you.
I'm good.
Tasha? Carrie? Carrie?
I will just say what I always say, and that is I very much appreciate the way that this board interacts with each other and engages with staff and with the issues before us. I do have something I'd like for us to get started on as well, but given that, I think we've probably given Matt enough to do and we're all tired and don't want to think about it, I will wait on that until next month.
Staff reports.
Just two very brief items I'd like to note to the planning board. You may recall, I believe it was last month, this board considered amendments to chapter 32 of the vegetation ordinance that was presented at the EAC this morning for their consideration. They voted unanimously to also recommend those changes in the ordinance. They're also going to be working with Rick Patterson, who's our stormwater administrator, who's also our town forester, to craft other recommendations for town council. But the recommendations that you made will be going to town council next month for their consideration. So that's some good news there. A minor report for the planning department staff, we were able to hire on a entry-level planner for the town, Planner One, to assist me in mainly the daily duties. His name's Brady Golden. He's a graduate of ECU. He has a degree in community planning and coastal studies. He's also worked during the summers for the town of Beaufort in their planning department. So he brings some good coastal knowledge to us. You'll probably see him at your next meeting as I kind of show him around and show him the ropes. He'll mostly be dealing with daily stuff, but as he grows more accustomed, you know, he may bring something before you, just to get him some extra experience. But that's very exciting news for us. You know, we're very, very busy downstairs and any capacity we can add is greatly appreciated. So just a note there.
I understand that program at ECU is really good.
He's a very bright young man. I'm very excited to have him on staff. I'm glad we could get him down here.
I see. Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Lisa, you got anything worse?
I do. If you'll see me before you go, I have the UDO printed out, and I'll explain what I did. It's all hole punch so that if you get new information and want to replace anything or just. or just when you get your items from West, we can put them in the front or the back or something if you want to. Over here, these are ordinance amendments that are pending in municipal, so they've been sent in, but they're not online. So, just wanted you to be aware of those as well. I printed out the table of uses separately because it did not print well in this version. So, I printed out a landscape version as well. So, I have all that for you, and I can either just pass them down, or you can just grab one on your way out.
We'll just grab one on our way out.
Madam Chair, as a reminder, what's the first date of the UDO, first UDO review meeting?
That's on September 7th, and that's at 10:00 a.m., not 10:30.
10:30. That's a Wednesday. Yeah, we'll be doing those, at least the first two on Wednesday.
Yeah, so October 12th is the second one.
October 12th is the other. Yeah.
Okay. I did send out a reminder, but it was to the previous board, so I'll send out another reminder to this board, that'd be fine, thank you.
Very good. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Any second? Second? All in favor? Okay. Thanks, guys.
Thanks for lunch.